Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. The time is 6:34 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. First is the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Any questions, comments, anything to be updated? Can I have a motion? Second? And we are not considered Zoom, so we don't have to do a real call. Is that correct? Right, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up is warrants 15 and 17. Any questions or comments on those? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 15 and 17.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, policy J. This is our second, technically, third read. Anyone have any other last-minute updates or adjustments to this? If not, can I have a motion to approve policy J?
I'll make a motion to approve policy J.
Second? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That says unanimously. Okay, next up is acknowledgement of professional teacher status.
Great. So, very excited to recognize our teachers who now have earned professional teacher status. So for those people who may not know, a teacher who has been in the district for three full years and is rated proficient, at least proficient on their evaluation, has the opportunity to earn professional teacher status. I think in other circles it might be considered tenure, or I think it provides the educators a little bit more protection than they have in their first three years as a developing educator. We had a few in the district. One is on maternity leave and one left us this summer. So we just have one here with us, and I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Jordan to recognize this. But I will say, I had the pleasure of being the principal at the junior/senior high school the past three years with Ms. Ingram, and could not be happier to have her on our staff. I think if anybody had the opportunity to be at graduation last year, you could see how much that the Granby Junior/Senior High School means to her, and I think how much she means to the students. Because to be the class speaker for the senior class, that's elected by the students. And Ms. Ingram was selected... We're almost watching ourselves laugh. And Ms. Ingram was selected to be the class speaker last year by the class of 2021. So considering I worked with her for three years, I wanted to make sure that I said a few words. But like I said, I will hand it over to Ms. Jordan.
Well, thank you. So am I bullets. So, thank you so much, and I echo Stephen's sentiments regarding Kelly. Want to make a point to make sure we're in person tonight, so it's honored here. And Kelly Ingram here. Kelly was a graduate here in 2011. It's pretty incredible that she's come back and has some of the same teachers. And it really paved, you know, a path for Kelly, and it's almost like she never left. You know, no, you went to college, right? But she was back. Kelly is now in her fourth year here at Granby. She's an incredible asset to our community, and the kids absolutely adore her. You could see Kelly teaching US History II, AP Government, Historical Fiction, and English XI. In Kelly's spare time, you can also know that Kelly was our keynote speaker for 2021's graduation ceremony. As I had a new hire this summer, I tasked that individual with listening to Kelly's speech on their five-hour commute on the way home, and he came back that following day and said it was absolutely incredible that he now knows and understands why Granby. And Kelly also is one of the most popular and selected chaperones at various functions. Everyone has to have a Ms. Ingram present, even signed up for prom this year as well, if you didn't know. And lastly, on 9/11, well, it was actually 9/10 here, I asked Kelly to guide the school community through a moment of peaceful reflection. I couldn't think of a better person. She sends chills down your spine when she speaks, and everybody listens to her. So I couldn't think of a better person, and to be here tonight is such an honor, Kelly. I didn't have the privilege of evaluating you the past few years. That was Stephen's role. But we will continue on, and thank you so much. Congratulations. Mr. Dorman had just a few words.
Well, to be clear, her speech was not five hours long. It was just the commute.
Thank you. My name is Todd Dorman. I've been a history teacher for 23 years in the district, and now I'm interim assistant principal. So Kelly was a student of mine, I think, oh, about five times in her career, and she still taught with me. She grew up in my classroom in many ways. And to have her come back and be a trusted and valued colleague is a great statement to her work ethic and what we do as a school community. And she's taken on new courses, new responsibilities every year she's been here. And as Ms. Ingram has said to the community, it is about those relationships, and she fosters those relationships all the time, and that's in her speech, as Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Jordan mentioned. And so just a fantastic part of our department, our school, and our community.
Go ahead. I just want to say thank you for the flowers and for the recognition, because I think it probably means a lot more to me than any of you really realize. Like they said, I grew up in Granby. I think a lot of people look at Granby and see that it's a small district and a small community, and I look at Granby and I see home. I grew up here, and I had the opportunity to come back and student teach. So with that said, I also want to thank Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Jordan for hiring me and giving me the opportunity to have this dream job, and to the rest of you for allowing me the opportunity to continue working here and continue this dream job. So thank you.
Let's take a quick picture.
Of course.
I need to do better with my social media, so.
Give them a minute to do pictures.
Oh, I was totally smiling. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really great. I'm glad that we're able to do some in-person recognition. It feels good. It feels like we're coming back into some sense of normalcy. Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations. Next up is visitor's comments. "Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes." We do have a in-person visitor today. Mr. Goodhart.
Is it? Okay. Someone's just come up.
Just be careful.
Perfect. Steve Goodhart, 183 Bachelor Street. I am also the girls' varsity softball coach. I would like to be added to the next agenda to propose a temporary batting cage for the girls' varsity and junior varsity softball team. And I would also like to ask what is needed for the information?
Excellent. So I think we can add you to the next agenda. The meeting will be... I gotta look at my calendar, because I don't remember the date yet. Oh, look at that. You've got it just right there. Yes, October 5th. And I think the basics that we would need to see for a proposal would be where you'd like to put it, is there what kind of financial responsibility, any kind of liability, anything anybody else can think of, who else could use it besides just the girls? Will it be year-round? I know you said temporary. Just kind of walk us through what it is, what entails, who's going to manage it, kind of thing. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to see?
Me too. If you have the proposal sooner, like if you had it next week, we can put it in the folder, so the school committee would have it. So if they have any questions ahead of time, they could direct them to you or to me, to you through me. What's that? You can email it to me or Jacqueline Coreta. And her email is just jcoreta@granbyschoolsma.net.
Then that might give us an opportunity to see, you know, what that looks like and different things like that as well. If you're looking at terms of liability and
Right.
all of those types of things.
So it may not be a one-and-done thing, but we'll kind of work through it and see how it goes. Cool? Yes?
Currently have a one for boys varsity and junior varsity, would it fall under the same type of liability?
I guess we'll have to look into it. I really, I didn't necessarily, I know you mentioned that to me in the past, but it didn't click. So we'll have to just mention that in your email with the kind of outline of it, and we can look into it. Excellent. Looking forward to seeing you on October 5th. Do we have any virtual visitors for tonight? Give them a minute. Steve? Okay, next up, student representative, Mr. Barron.
Hello?
Hello?
We have a few things to go over. We had parents' night for both East Meadow and high school. East Meadow, who obviously has very high attendance this year. We got lots of sports going on right now. Soccer, for the boys especially, are off to a great start, as well as the girls. We have cross country. They have their first Q-meets already. And volleyball for the girls. They're all students. I went to the game today. They won. Just want to touch on the kids being back in person full-time and starting to really feel normal again. Normal again. Like last year, I believe, like, majority of kids back, but you still have a lot more distance, a lot more regulation, but of course, as of your own moment. It's shifted back to every light. The high school student council will meet this Thursday for the first time this year. And there will also be a vaccine clinic for all the public in all the schools in the student parking lot from 11:00 to 7:00.
Thursday.
It's Thursday. You're gonna hear that again.
Probably again and again. And you said the energy is pretty good, and people are glad to be back?
You can feel it in the teachers too, and the kids, teachers, all staff, you know.
Excellent. Any questions for Marcus? So glad to have you back.
He's got a busy schedule too, so very happy to see you.
Well, you know, let us know if, how you want to work it, and we can try to work it out. But I think you're going to try to come just for one meeting a month, whether it's the first or last, whatever, whatever works for you. Okay, great.
Yeah, so Marcus and I have talked a little bit about, he's going to try to get to the first meeting of the month, but since he missed this month's first meeting, he wanted to come here today. So him and I are trying to schedule a meeting prior to the meetings just to check in. So if anything comes up, I'll try to work with Jackie to adjust the agenda as well.
Excellent. Anything else, Marcus, or you guys? Awesome. Next is the Granby Educators Association update. Cheryl?
Adding to what Marcus said to say, yeah, the energy is great. People are really, students and teachers and staff alike, we're very happy to be back in our buildings. It's like real teaching and learning again. Buildings look great. Our classrooms all look, you know, just wonderful. And yeah, our parents' night was standing room only here at East Meadow. I still want to say West Street, East Meadow. And, you know, the kids, like, they're still, our kids are little. We're still getting them into routines, and there's, you know, there's a few that are really struggling with it, and there's some social and emotional stuff going on. But we're working through it, and, you know, they have gone to school for over a year or so, and then the summer,
Right.
as you all know. But I think that, I think overall, it's really, really a positive feeling every morning when we walk in here, and people are really happy to be back. I know I am.
I can't even tell you how good that makes my heart feel.
Yeah.
People are glad to be coming back.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Any questions, anything for Cheryl? Excellent.
Put it here.
Yeah.
Feels good.
Okay, next up is continuing business mask update. We had put this on because the, everything was for October 1st initially. I haven't seen or heard in any of the emails that that has been extended. I'm assuming that it will be with the numbers, according to Dick Bomadere's emails, still on the rise. So I don't know if we have anything, or if we'd like, just want to have it live there as a tickler, just going forward.
Yeah, I think we had anticipated possibly having some more guidance from the state at this point, and as of half an hour ago, we still don't. So I know other superintendents and school committees are wondering. The commissioner has said that they're working on it, but still no guidance. He has indicated that the, it could still be October 1st. It could get pushed back. I mean, everything seems to be on the table.
But we don't have, Granby's order didn't have a date, didn't have a date. So regardless of what happens with Desi, we're still under the mask mandate from Granby Board of Health.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that's clear, that we're not saying if Desi lifts something, that we will automatically lift something. It will depend upon what follows from Granby Board of Health, because they follow the most restrictive, right?
The closest in proximity, yeah, most restrictive. And then we adopted a policy as well that would have to be adjusted, even if the Board of Health lifted something. So we have a couple of layers still.
Excellent. Next up is the testing program.
Yeah, so the testing program, to be honest, has been frustrating in some ways. We were provided with a program coordinator last week. Nancy and I met with that person. We are still awaiting some supplies that we need in order to begin the pool testing or the routine safety checks. It was formerly referred to as the pool testing. I pushed CIC and our program coordinator to try to get it up and running this week. It does, I'm not confident that's going to happen, but we're going to continue to push. I think it's the supplies and then some staffing. So Nancy has drafted a letter that CIC is reviewing that we could potentially send out to our community, and if anybody is willing and available to be a tester, that they could apply for a position through CIC and get hired and get paid for that work. As of right now, as of today, we have 109 students signed up for testing and 15 staff. So still some kinks to work out. We want to get it started as much as anybody, but it, every time we take a step forward, we meet a new obstacle, unfortunately. And I do think CIC, which is the state vendor, I think they're overwhelmed by the response. I think on the last commissioner call, he mentioned something, 2,000 schools that account for about 80,000 students had signed up for testing programs. And I think that was much larger than the small testing pilot that districts participated in last year. And we, if you remember, we didn't participate last year because we worried about our capacity. But then the state offered these resources, the staffing and all of this. And I think that intrigued us, and I think many other districts. So I think that is part of the issue.
I do have a question on the testing, and someone asked me, and I didn't know or even necessarily understand what they were asking, so I'm going to ask it the way it was asked to me. If someone has previously had a positive COVID case in the last 90 days, won't they still test positive? And if they are doing that, and then we go through that whole protocol, they're, I mean, the way they're going for it is that, how can we be sure that a positive test isn't an active, current positive test without going back and seeing if they had a diagnosis? So I didn't know how to answer that, and then it made me stop and wonder about some of that, so.
Yeah, so Nancy's on, but I'm happy to take a shot at this one, Nancy. So there are some exemptions when it comes to quarantine and isolation. And somebody who has had COVID in the last 90 days, as long as they are asymptomatic, would still be eligible to be in school. That is one of the exemptions.
Those people shouldn't be signed up for the safety checks, because they would cause the pool to be positive?
Yeah, I think they would want to consult with our nursing staff. Could consult with CIC to get confirmed that, but I don't know if Nancy has any other details.
Yeah, I agree with you, Stephen. We definitely need to take a look at that, because people can test positive for quite some time afterwards. That's part of the reason why we are not requiring folks who've tested positive to have a positive, a negative test to return. But that definitely can skew results. So when that, you know, when we come across that, that will be a conversation that we will definitely need to have with CIC Health because of that. So I think until, you know, they're out of their 90 days or CIC Health provides additional guidance, they wouldn't be able to participate in the testing at that point. So that's a really good question.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And it's really shifted, like, the testing being the focus, as much as it is now the time and symptoms.
Symptoms.
So depending on each case, and there's a whole flow chart. Nancy did a presentation that is posted on our school website. I also believe it's on GCAM's YouTube channel that goes through all of that information, and she presented at the last school committee. But that's all posted now.
Yeah, so I was just flipping through her thing, as I just wanted to make sure that 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 was something that was on the radar, because again, when it was asked to me, I didn't know. And also the clarification of, you don't need the negative test to return to school, because I've seen that in other days that I've been reading. So I'm glad to have that.
Can I just ask one other clarification for the testing program that we're participating in?
Of course.
I believe that we're only participating currently in the, well, we will be, in the pool testing and safety checks. We're not doing symptomatic testing at this time.
Pool testing and safety checks are the same, same, no?
So pool testing and safety checks are the same thing, but we're doing the routine safety checks and the test and stay.
Test and stay.
We're not doing symptomatic right now, but that is certainly something we would consider. It was another, like, factor of not having all the information and knowing all the information. So we made a decision to participate, but wanted some more information on that. So we can opt in and out of tests through the program as we move forward.
Okay, that's great.
And I have a question, but it's sort of tied to this, but I'm not sure if we need to add it to an agenda, because it's not an appropriate question, just tell me. But last year, there was a flu vaccine requirement that was, I don't remember if it was state or federal. Everyone had to have it by a certain day, and then it got, it was state.
State, and it got lifted right before that deadline.
Okay, so that is not a thing?
Currently, we have not heard that. Nancy, have you heard anything on that?
We haven't, but I actually am trying to get a meeting with the school health unit from DPH, the director, because we have state-mandated immunization surveys that we have to complete. And the way that they're written, it's appearing that they're asking for information whether people are complying or not, but that is not a mandate right now. So trying to get clarification, but we have no, nothing in writing indicating that that's a requirement for this year. So it's interesting how they wrote the survey, but you are correct, at this time, it's not mandated.
Excellent. I would like to keep testing on the agenda for the next time. So masks and testing will just sort of live on the agenda for the table future, if that's okay with everybody?
That makes sense.
Can I just make a quick, just a quick note? We are having a lot of families asking if we're testing symptomatic students. It's just a reminder that even if we were to participate in that form of testing, students should not be coming to school with any signs of illness. If they are, they need to be contacting their healthcare provider. That form of testing is only if students develop symptoms while in school.
So what I was saying was that the testing form was given to districts by the state. We were asked not to manipulate it, but we have made a decision that if a family is comfortable participating in one of our two options, we are providing that option internally. So if a family wants to participate in test and stay, but not in the routine safety check, they can either note it on the form or reach out to Nancy when they submit it. And we're happy to accommodate that. We would prefer if families participate in any way, rather than, we didn't want them to feel like it was all or nothing. Is, that's total consent, yeah. So specific to the test and stay, like, which test? I can get that information. I just don't have it.
Maybe come in to either Mr. Latoy's weekly update or the Ritter Part that you can opt in to, just wanted, instead of all three, just that exact definition you just gave us might be really helpful for people.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Anything else on testing? Okay. So, earlier, we're really glad that you're here for our first work group meeting, because the first item that we're going to be working on is the school committee calendar. So it'll be nice to have some with you about select board dates and just kind of working through, because we're, we want to build out our calendar around our dates and how the year goes. So if you know off the top of your head, or if you could bring it back to us next time, any of the deadlines or dates of how you guys see things, then we can make sure that we have it with enough time built in on our calendar. So that's where we're at, is the work group meetings. And the first one, we're going to sit, it's, because it's a new subcommittee, and like I just alluded to, we're going to be building out the school committee calendar. And the way that we had talked about this is kind of get a framework for the entire school year of what comes up, when, when we want to try to slot in or would be appropriate for public forums, when there's due dates of information that we owe to certain people, and just kind of have some of the call-out dates, like, you know, one that we hear is we have the SIMS data on October 1st for, you know, our school choice numbers. And, you know, just kind of build it all out. And so Audrey, I think this is your baby, right?
Yeah, I just felt like, I mean, there was a lot of things that I just still had questions about, and I didn't know, you know, what month we were getting this or that, and it was you know, the next person that eventually comes in, you know, if that happens, that, you know, the, kind of what to expect month-to-month or beyond, kind of either way.
You and who? Okay. So one of you should sort of be the chair of the committee. And so I don't know if you guys want to figure that or if you've already talked about that. And then you guys can walk us through it and how you want to uh, what you expect for today.
Like Jen, you've been doing this for a few years, so I'm kind of looking and hoping that, you know, you'll have some of that information of when we do those things and um, you know, I think a couple hot topics, I know that Adam, you would put in the folder somewhere.
Yes, I would say this calendar, um it's going to be major. At least my opinion, budget um dates. So I put uh the draft in there. Um, that includes, I, that includes a lot of details, but there's probably or five dates on there that we want to this calendar that you guys are talking about. Um, a couple of them, I don't know how you want to go about doing this, but um, yeah, I, I see it really being dominated by the budget and by deadlines. That we need to get stuff to the town. You also mentioned like some SIMS stuff, which since I would just say some.
Bodon school choice.
Yeah, some high level, like high level dates, yeah.
Yes, and strategic plan and, you know.
Is it, is it, is it like, makes sense to come up with like exactly what you want on that calendar and then maybe whoever can assign. Wasn't it, or get them to you guys with the dates and then you guys can put them into the calendar or?
So what I did was I started a document, all the months listed and then like, you know, we even copy paste off your document and throw those in the same thing, like we say, school choice we do in March. Yeah, you know what I mean? Like so. And like I said, it can be something you can, you know, just like a checking back the one they're supposed to and that they're kind of in our mind.
Just thinking like the signature and evaluation.
The question, that was the question I had last year. I said to Carol, I'm like, Alifa.
So Jackie had sent us an email on um important date superintendent evaluation by school committee is on there.
Yeah.
Uh, on there for Jan- January, so I don't, like I think yes, but I don't know.
So that was one of the
We January, but.
Have, it's sort of been a cyclical pro- I'll say problem in quotes is that we come in, we, when we start in July, you know, we have a few meetings and then we hit the ground running with getting the school year um up and running. And so it seems like by the time we're getting the goals nailed down, we're already supposed to be in an evaluation process. So that's certainly one of the things.
You mean selecting of which um of his?
We're supposed to be evaluating him in January, but he doesn't even have specific goals yet.
Right.
You know, so.
I just question, I know she was just jotting down it, but I just question where that came from?
So she went back to prior years' agendas to see when the committee was doing these things at those years?
Yeah, so I don't know if there was a, a reason for that time. I don't know if that from July to a time period, you know, like.
So the way that I understood it at the time is that was when it sort of brushed, we need to do this, let's get it on the calendar. So it was, it was out of cycle. Um, trying to get the evaluation done. Um, is that how?
Yeah, because that was my first year.
Was the whole, there was a change in the evaluation process and form, so there was, there was a lot around that. So I certainly think that to kind of get nailed down. So when, when and how would be built out for you? That makes sense. Now, I don't know if it should mimic what you do with the teachers or if it should be. I mean, I feel like your goals need to be probably established before you start putting them out for what the staff has. But I'm, I'm not sure how to make that work and to play catch up.
Yeah, I think typically, I think this year, like with the entry plan and everything like that, it's pushed things off. So I was hoping this year that I would present draft goals to you all on the fifth um for your feedback. And then they're at the next meeting in January, early November. I think in the future, pushing that back to September, late October, uh October certainly makes some sense. And I think, well, my goals specifically haven't been like shared with the staff. Think at convocation, I shared um, you know, my core values, the work that we did at the leadership retreat about like certain buckets that we're prioritizing this school year, which those things are going to inform my goals, which hopefully are informing teacher goals. So they, the staff has been shared that information. But I think you're right that having my goals in August or September and so that they're public certainly makes sense in the future.
Right.
And I don't know, like in terms of the evaluation, like I think there's some fact, like this might be an area that's worth getting some information from Tracy on. I think maybe this year it's later and then like, I don't know, because there's some things in the contract that like certain things need to be done by certain dates too. So uh getting some guidance on that one might not be a bad idea because maybe it, it should be in January and no, does my first evaluation happen in January of twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two? I, like, I have some of those same questions.
That might be a Tracy um touch base. It was like an Excel.
Put that out and it had like
to another one that we had to prioritize and rate.
And I shared with everyone the webinar from last week, which was helpful. And then there's a five-part video series attached to that web superintendent evaluation. So some of it, I haven't gotten through all five, but some of that information might available there as well.
So that, that piece is going to be, um, I think a lot more needs to be fleshed out. So that'll be something that you guys can work on in subsequent meetings. You know, that's sort of like the crux of what it is. Why we wanted to start this committee, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And exactly like you just said, like, you know, realizing, oh, we probably should have already started. Like, I don't want to do that plan and we know that at this month, this should be on our radar. Place we can all look at.
And also, I know that we have talked a number of times of amongst ourselves individually, you know, me mostly driving it is, I want kind of have target public forum dates, like we have talked about, budget um, budget wise. When we get to, you know, February, March, end of meeting, when we have a public forum, there's a lot more, we can actually have issues with anyone that comes that has questions. And I've talked, even I want to have some of these budget um kind of conversations with the staff and administration. But if they have any questions, they can work through them also. So whether it's a public forum for staff and administration, or if it's something where we set something up for you guys during the school day or, or how, you know, those are some other things that I want to make sure we get uh captured on. Um, so that we can also understand what people know or want to. And where, where some of the rumors start and how they start, because it's, you know, people talking and something gets taken slightly out of context and it builds and we're, we have to build back like if we're out there and um informing people, is that going to be more or different work for you? Because it's just going to be building on what you do currently?
Yeah, not really. Um, and I have the, in the draft calendar, I have two public forum dates built in there.
Okay.
And, and then into a public hearing, which is really just us presenting the budget to the public. So it's, it's not really meant for um back dialogue, but there are two public forums built into this draft calendar right now. And hey, this is, I mean, it's a very fluid. I, our budget finance um calendar is a very fluid calendar. You guys know the dates are going to change a lot as we get into the process. Um, so I'd like to keep this um in this forum draft right now until the subcommittee has a chance to meet for the first time and actually dive into it and look at those dates and see if you want to add anything. But right now I have two public forums in there. I have two joint meeting um dates in there. Always have more, um, we can always have more public forums. Um, but yes, it is, it's the work that we, I'm not going to say I, that we do anyway. Um, it's really on us to campaign and, and make ourselves available to, to give that information. So we can put as many of those dates in there. Um.
Do you have any dates that you know off the top of? Um, we can have um one of the girls reach out to you, um, if you think that would be better, just so we can, from a select board perspective, any dates that you think that we need to make sure to not miss or?
I mean, no, I think it's sort of the well, I mean, anytime before. Give the information to them, uh, whether the people want and give the information out there. I think if that was just that much easier, um, but but we're trying to that range out there and that's, the best you can do is kind of communicate that with them.
Departments or anything come before select board for budget stuff?
So I have a question. In what timeframe do they do that? Are they all um in a certain month that they come or do they all gather?
No, they come at different time. We actually set
Okay.
You'd be right, right on January would start.
I thought of is, do you guys have any set meeting dates that you have with finance?
Which questions are coming up with our conversations with the, the finance committee?
And you'll have joint meetings with them?
I'm hoping to.
That's what I'm thinking, once you guys have a date.
Back to that.
Right. Well, I think that may be something you guys could as a calendar subcommittee, reach out to um, you know, Jen, copy Glenn as our liaison and uh, you know, try to, let's try to get a couple of these um full joint committee meetings on the docket. And it's not just about budget stuff, it's just about stuff in well, I feel like that we're we sort of bodies of the town, right? So um, I feel like that might be helpful and that we've, we've really had some, I'll say good conversations at some of the previous um joint committee meetings. So I feel like, you know, it's we can continue to have those because I feel like then it's, everything's not so foreign, you know, people aren't foreign. I can say that I've been to a couple of them and I still, I'm not a hundred percent sure who everybody is. Everybody is. So it'd be nice to just kind of have that face-to-face interaction. And now that we can have some meetings in person, I think I'd like to try to get some of those on that calendar. Well, you know, and see if we can now set up some, we're not scrambling, trying to get everyone's calendars to mesh.
Yeah, again, those dates I have in there for a joint finance committee meeting, like those just, I, I just put those in there because I, I mean, our budget starts a little earlier, really. Not that they're not talking about it in October, November, but we're talking about it in October, November. We might not get into the actual process until December, January, but we're, you know, we're a month away, less than a month away from starting the talks for next year. So um, and I know we talked like we're, we're essentially going to revamp the whole budget process and it's not going to change entirely this year. Like there, there's some work that we got to do. It's going to take a, a few years, but there's a lot that we have to do um to change that process. And I had some quick conversations, emails with Chris before, like asking what the town departments follow for their budget, uh, some what the calendar, because I mean, at the end of the day, we're a town department. I, I want to be included in that as well. So even though the finance or the select necessarily need our budget, like I'd like to be included in that. Like if, if there's every other department to have costs or, you know, let's, we'll follow that. I don't think we have a problem being able to do that.
Right, and it'd be good to just kind of, if everybody knows what, what all of the dates are and become, and then, you know, it would be nice to um, because your meetings are set, right? You're, you don't decide at your next meeting when your next meeting is, right? You, you guys set a calendar, right?
Our meetings are first and third um on the other month.
Okay.
Once a holiday happens before, that's our scheduled regular meeting. I think we need to meet, but that might be, I would suggest we meet on a day that, do the boards meet, just have a separate day, so you know.
Finance committee, what day is finance committee? Are they choose, are they Mondays or are they Wednesdays?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Really?
Watching, they're, and they don't have them every month.
Okay.
The finance committee is kind of, so they need to come together and meet.
Okay.
I'm uncertain. But I think it's, I think now what you said is maybe start looking um dates on calendars, but we do have those, like you said. And I, I know after the year, the year before, we try to get two committees, three committees together and see like almost impossible, but well, I can't make it then, I can't make it then. So maybe looking toward the future.
Yeah.
And get into like the December or January. We're going to meet this day, you know, go, go from there. Do the, the select board, um, on my next meeting on Monday, think how to bring that back as far as that's what kind of day, let's pick a day now and say, okay, you know, three months out, you can have a look at the calendar, that's it.
Yeah, so my draft, I, I actually, for the week of December sixth through tenth, again, very fluid date, but it's a, a joint meeting with everybody. So again, we're a couple of months out. We should be able to get something on the calendar, so.
What is the best way to reach out to Kathy or to
Either email me or actually you know, traffic, is that way it
I don't have your email address.
Well, if you reach out to Kathy Leonard, so that way it'll come right to the select board meeting.
That's the best way for finance committee too, is right, through Kathy Leonard or?
Kathy can pass down to the finance, they, they all have emails.
They all have school, if you go into your school Google email and start typing their names, they should populate.
Okay.
Because they've all, you've been copied in on all of the emails that they've gotten, so you should have.
It should be on it. Unless I have some other contact information.
Yeah, the last time I looked, I didn't see it.
I didn't, there's nobody's.
Chris Martin.
But I, I just suggest to Kathy that way, to front up that our meeting comes on the agenda, so I can bring up the, the board itself.
It's about three more minutes for a full group and then I'd like to break so that you guys, whoever wants to continue the calendar discussion can. And then um Stephanie and I can break out to do the, the community relations. And Cheryl, I know you can't stay for the whole meeting, but I was with us for the community relations for a few minutes. I'd love to kind of see um from the uh, you're a community member number one, but you're also a teacher. At some ways that we could connect with um families and just other people. I would really appreciate some, some input. So is there anything else for full group as far as calendar? Do you feel like you've got at least sort of a direction, you guys? I think we've got some really great conversation.
Well, I just add one more um thing for calendar to, and reach out to Tracy offered to do a presentation on how the school budget in the process of it. I think that'd be a great resource to for having a public forum, that way people can kind of understand the foundation
for having public forum, that way people can kind of understand the foundation of how our budget is created. And she did offer that.
Did you videotape it too, or were you on that?
That wasn't that was overall school.
Yeah, that was not had it.
From Tracy, she said she would do it for like a community, a, a community event.
Yeah, yeah. That way we can all understand how it works, whether it's so complex.
Um, and it'd be good for to hear it too, you know, like what, what the state guy how, how all of these pieces fit in. It's not just us saying we have these formulas, like where, where it all comes from.
Yeah, it's a different voice, right? It's not us, it's not us, you know.
Right.
Saying the same things.
There's requirements, definitely not to be that.
When are you thinking for something like that?
I, I think that's up to um when Tracy might be available and when you think it might.
Like I wanted to, like Stephanie said, it should kind of kick off the budget process, but not too far ahead.
I would say for others and I could pick it out, I would love it for, to be like an October, very early November sort of thing.
So my draft calendar, I have November second as our first budget and finance subcommittee meeting, which and we can talk about this in the calendar. Guys, I just aligned those with school committee meetings. Um, so that is a school committee uh meeting night is Tuesday, November second. So if you said early November, late October, I think that'd probably be a good, a good starting point, or she can do that.
It would just be important to make sure that other parties don't have meetings that night. That way we can reach out and invite everyone to join. So you just wanna make sure that's on our radar to check the meetings, that way it doesn't fall the same night.
Are they posted on? Mondays, but like first, I have committee down there.
They don't have set.
I would say, you know, we can do this, like, just to kind of get ahead of it, but definitely I think to kick it off. That story would be terrific.
I'm just trying to think anything coming up, because they don't have a set. Yeah, just because it's not on the website doesn't mean that they don't, they don't have dates figured out, whether, you know, it might feel varied to us, but it might be when they look at their calendars, like a Monday this month, a Tuesday next month, you know, a couple of Wednesdays and then we're gonna be on a Thursday or whatever, you know, we don't know what that is, so. Uh, is John still the chair?
I don't know, he is.
Um, again, we need to talk to Kathy too, because she has to take that conversation.
Okay, so it's seven thirty. Um, I think at, what do you think, twenty minutes? And then um we'll come back and kind of you guys can fill us in on where you're at. We'll fill you in thinking and um.
So just one thing before we go too far away, I feel if everyone else would agree, the PTS recognition and earlier in the, right in September, even our first September meeting, I felt like that's what we don't have questions about, we can probably put on the calendar. Um, I felt like that is good timing.
Yeah, and then the other one that I wanted to make sure that we bring back is um the scholarship recognition. I thought was really nice when um Cheryl Stanton invited all of the John and Abigail Adams scholarship award winners, had like a little mini reception in the first part of our meeting. You know, um, it was really nice, it's a nice connection. And then I think there was something else. I know we've recognized um we recognized an Eagle Scout that did a community project here, just like those recognition of them and to make sure that um, you know, we, I think that's a good, a good connection.
I'm trying to get right back to Ally about those things too, as she posts those in the report and kind of get ahead of.
Is there anything else that you can think of as a student that, you know, you would like to see sort of recognition wise or other things, school committee wise that we should try to tie in?
I think that the we'll put three, three nights every month that I show you.
I didn't even know that was a thing. That's a great idea.
It's a new thing.
I love it.
Listen, I just added on my teacher appreciation.
Speaking of teacher appreciation, that's probably something that you go on our calendar.
Yeah, it's weird.
I wanted to go on there. Um.
Scholarship?
I wrote that down. I do scholarship.
Well, I think they, I think we did it in May, because those scholarships are usually announced.
Yeah, the Scott, John and Abigail Adams, I don't know what about this year because this year's class is a little funky. They can still take the MCAS this fall to earn the scholarship because they could take it last spring, so. Um, but I would think like March, April, we'd probably have a pretty good idea.
Another thing I was thinking of is Grin Spoon. If that kind of stuff that might come up, I want to make sure that that's in there too.
Yep, and we're Grin Spoon every other year and we had a recipient last year.
Right, okay.
So it's not till next year. I think we should go. Um, where could, what else do you have for us after you guys met um as your committee?
Um, we definitely were able to kind of organize the draft and I want to share that with you guys as a one piece.
I believe so, yeah.
Um, I can share that with you. Uh, in fact, I believe that the draft, it was still kind of under construction as well. Um. I obviously know the budget that I have thus far. I got a couple comments on the side of wanting to send out some emails and kind of reach out to um, floor and kind of maybe some of that some case of point today, but first one I struggled with is the president's letter.
Did you send it already or you know? Did you share it already? No.
I did not.
Okay. You don't have to right now. I just was, I was looking deeper.
Okay, yeah, so this one, this is the, yeah.
So I sent you the, I just sent you the template that I used for the budget calendar.
Uh, something else we can talk about is our teachers to contact, I mean, that and that will not be out.
Oh, perfect.
And I think it would be, that's one of those that we can hopefully ask things to do, so. I don't know, we should be out of here.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be the next, next, uh, we'll make sure that um the calendar committee meets for the next subcommittee um meeting.
Yeah, so what I also want to point out, I don't want to try to put a lot of stuff in here because we're making expectations of having some of it done. And we can't make all of it. I don't think it is expectation, but kind of like a visual, like you can go to it, you can check, like these are some things to kind of have on the radar, not necessarily a checklist or a.
Speaking of which, though, can you move the mass, mass um joint meeting to November? Because it seems like that's going to be a regular um conference time. And I know it's gonna be tight, it sounds like, to get kind of a group to go for this year, um, but it might be something to keep on the radar for next year. Then in June.
Might even be something that we want to put on in July, right? Because when did the early bird edition?
Or maybe leave it for June, but just as like a decide on who's attending, because of that early bird, I think ends in July.
July sometime.
Yeah. That's great. My notes are not as explicit as this. I have chicken scratch.
I have chicken scratch, very productive, if I can somehow.
Yeah, um, well, I, I didn't mean that. I would just say.
No, I know for that, yeah. And I think, I think more things come up with baby four than I have with other conferences.
So um for community relations, we had some really great um conversation, I'll say, but do you want to go ahead and uh, do you want to read my chicken tracks or? Just kind of the highlights of some of them.
So let's see, so some highlights are gonna be, um, students are gonna be working on monthly newsletters, kind of like the old chalk talk where, you know, we're gonna have some hard copies around town, we're seeing us on our junk and donuts, maybe uh food restaurants, something like that, and then have hard copies here as well to just give like that maybe a monthly update. Um, also a virtual school newspaper, we're gonna be starting at the high school. Um, we were talking about seeing us on our get togethers, some projects, maybe we can bring up from a elementary level to reach out to those other um communities of people that maybe are not in school. Um, and then let's see, another big thing that I brought up is just what can we do, like directly us, like where can we be more present, whether that means um, looking at events that are happening within the schools, within the community and kind of being more, more present ourselves. Things that are happening in the schools, we can truly be more mindful of affairs, you know, different awards or things like that and making sure that our representatives can be there and be more of a face um to build, pretty much every time we can meet with anybody, like that's just gonna help kind of make those relationships. So we're talking about different things going on in town and, and to different areas that we can, you know, be a part of. And then, oh, we also, uh, Glenn brought up a very, about touring, um, kind of leading tours every once in a while, and we could lead tours to high school, or we spread out to community members. Um, but to bring them in, see the buildings and again, every time someone's in or has that face to face, you know, kind of talking, he made a really amazing sentiment about um you know, how his kids went to his schools and how the people who worked before him um in the community, you know, made that happen. And now it's just it's still a big responsibility for the next generation of kids coming in, you know, even if you don't have kids in the building, like we need to keep being mindful of, you know, we have to be, so. And go stick, stick away at that.
And then the other thing that he um suggested, it suggested it was um, for the school committee or the schools, I'm not, we're not sure where it should originate from, but a questionnaire is what can we do for you as a community? What is it that you're looking for from us and um from the school? So kind of like is there something that the school committee um we should be looking at to do that will help um with that connection? Is there something that you'd like to see from the schools that, you know, that isn't being offered or, you know, kind of engage some feedback? Um, and um trying to get um a way for people to come back to the buildings. It, we understand COVID, it's dark time and everything, but there used to be, when I was a kid, um Cheryl said when her kids were younger, there was always stuff happening at the schools that was somehow a community tie. Whether there was, you know, boy scout and girl scout meetings, whether there was um Bible school, church, um CCD used to be here, I think it's still, it might, it might still be at uh here at East Meadow. Um, spaghetti suppers from the church, because they didn't have a, a space big enough, just there used to be spaghetti suppers that were put on by different grades as fundraisers that were put out for stuff. The senior center used to come here for um their hot lunch, like I, I it wasn't like a meals on wheels program, but we used to provide hot lunch when I was a kid, the cafeteria at the high school. They'd come in at like eleven fifteen or, or maybe it was after lunch, after our school lunch or whatever.
Do we know what kind of situation do we know?
I spoke with Michelle Simpson last week and um she's looking to round out that organization. Um, I think there's
PTO and then there's boosters.
Yes.
So boosters is the more the high school and PTO is more for the elementary school, is that?
PTO is K to twelve, they've, they've helped out, but I think more prevalent at the K to six, yes.
So she's not, they're not long, they're not gonna exist or?
They're gonna exist. I think there's just been quite a few changes in the organization, so.
Well, I think a lot of the people that were on the board for PTO, their kids are now in the other school.
Yeah, because I used to, well, and I was honest too, yeah. COVID obviously didn't happen, um, and then we've been a little bit of a thing over there.
Michelle Simpson is the contact, is the only person who's made contact with me. Um, how about that?
And then it's um, is it Kathy?
Chrissy.
Chrissy. I was like, I know her too, and I totally blanked.
Yes.
But Chrissy Matarde, yeah.
And then Heather Labonte is the president of the GMPA. GMPA. That's Heather Labonte, needs that.
They were used to be part of reasons, but it was a community about nothing.
They do.
But they also did um take, take up.
Dinner.
Which were excellent.
Yes, they were.
Um, so just trying to rebuild the connection and get people to come back to the buildings and, and view it um differently. And we all said it in the group, which we've all said a number of times, if this, I mean, we're, we're, I would say overall in a pretty um good place. But we can't afford to not be in a good place because if, that we start having trouble with the schools and all of that, it impacts everything, like, you know.
So the fourth of the building company, we want to ask them, um, do you press with about it and try to?
Well, I think we need to, we need to flesh out how we want to do that and who we want to ha- have that and where, where do we start, you know? Um, and then there's all the COVID stuff right now where I don't think we necessarily can have, can we just have visitors in the building right now?
Depend, I think it depends on how we plan it, like just drop ins probably less so, but I mean, if we had a group this size that was coming in after school, we could certainly.
Right, and then it's also.
Yes, and I've actually, in my superintendent's report, have like some office hours for myself too, when I'm available, so we wanted to use that as a tour time at some points, we could certainly.
Just making me think, um, when you have the, the coffee.
And conversation?
Yeah, and conversation. Is that gonna be ongoing or?
Yes, we, we scheduled a district leadership team one because I think only one person showed up, so and it was in the late summer, so October twenty eighth, I think we have another district leadership one too.
Um, so that's sort of where we're, um, where we're at, so. Um, I think personally, at this point for the October one, I'd like to see the same two committees on the agenda as far as having that workshop time, because we have said a number of times then that we can use the finance.
Yeah, we can.
We can do that as a separate um one, as long as we post it.
Hmm.
Um, but I think this is good to be, because having this feedback and stuff, I think is good because it these two are really foundational for us right now. We get this calendar built and we get the community, the date, well, in my head, it's sort of like they feed in like, like overlay, you know, we can, if we come up with some great ideas, we can put it out there on the calendar, you know, um. Hmm, and, no, it's not to go out to the town, but it helps us to think about, you know, if we know things that are coming out, we can put it out, like Stefan said, to have visibility. If there's something that's coming out, we can put it on the calendar and be like, who can go, who can't go and just it's gonna, this will be a living document for us.
For uh community relations, um, I remember doing lip reads and stuff like that.
Hmm.
Like being able to be there then, as a school. Community. Not that they have it right now, but. Um, when is coming up?
There's not really anything planned.
I know the preservation committee has something on Halloween, they could drive through Halloween.
Yeah, those are, I don't know, they're going to be down on Sunday. So I guess anything that you can.
No, it's, it's just drive through.
Making note of any events you can see, you can just add to a living document, say, hey, you know, this is this day or whatever, that's kind of what we'll do, just keep it right out.
Yeah. And I think, like, I went to Dyno Fest, I think the school should have a table at Dyno Fest, Charter Days comes back. I mean, those are the things we can necessarily add to our calendar per se, like for our meetings, but. Things to be on our radar in July and August, so we're reaching out to the right people to say the schools would like to have a, a table, um, at those events.
Perfect. Um, so I think we don't have superintendent's report, but you have a couple of dates just to mention to people, that's just sharing of information again about the vaccine clinic.
I'll try to be brief with everything. Um, just a couple of updates, demographic forms have been sent out, um, for both schools. It's really important that we get those back from families. We use that, um, you know, for obviously contact information, but also emergency contacts when students might be getting picked up. By somebody other than a parent or guardian, so really important. And, um, as soon as you get that back to us, we will stop harassing you, I promise. Um, and if you have not heard from us on it, please contact your school's office. Um, Marcus covered Parents Night. Thank you for everyone who attended both schools. It was great crowds and, um, we're getting feedback. And we appreciate that so that we can, uh, make the event better in the future. MCAS results, people may be aware, came out today. Um, we've had access to them for a week. Um. We will, we'll have a more formal presentation at an upcoming meeting, but, um, you know, I think our results are similar to the results that we're seeing across the state. That, um, they show that students, more students had gaps in their knowledge of math and to a lesser extent, English. Language arts compared to students in the same grades prior to the pandemic. Um, fewer students are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. And that's a trend that we've seen, grades three through, three through 10, um, I suppose if we're just talking about the testing grades. And, um, the trend is really no different in Granby right now, but really like just starting to dig through that data, it's very early, but that did come out today. And then parents should expect to get some parent reports in early October. Those will be available to schools, um, late next week and we'll get them out right after that. Vaccination clinic this Thursday, uh, September 23rd, it's 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the junior senior high school. Uh, Parkima, it's available to anybody who is over 12 years old. So if you know somebody who's looking for a vaccine, trying to get a vaccine. Um, that's an opportunity for them to stop by. Parents can give consent to their students prior to, um, school on that day. So if we have the consent, the parent does not need to be present. Um, and they can go to Nancy Jenks for that. Um, East Meadow has just received a grant, a thousand dollar grant from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation for a project called Reading the World. The money will be spent on purchasing high interest fiction and nonfiction reading materials about a wide range of subjects for all grades and reading levels. Teachers will engage students in guided reading activities with the goal of improving fluency and comprehension. Students will be assessed three times a year, um, to track their growth. And we want to thank Dollar General for this opportunity. And I want to thank Sue Crego for writing that grant. Um, we were excited to find out we received that this week. Um, I have listed our office hours, so I have two hour blocks, um, once a week between now and the holidays. I will not read through all of them, but, uh, Monday, September 27th, so next Monday is the first one. Um, I'm available between 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM and anybody who would like to meet would just have to re- reach out to, um, Jackie. Either by calling the superintendent's office or you can email her at JKKARETA@grambyschoolsma.net. Um, and we will post those, I will post the other dates, but each week between now and the holidays, there's a two hour block. Um, I'm like reading through this so fast because it wasn't on the agenda, but. Um, Booster Club did provide an update too. There is some new leadership with the Booster Club, uh, President Chrissy Michalszek. And, um, they have some activities coming up. The Snack Shack's going to be open at Home Games, which has been closed for a few years. They're planning a fall banquet, a 50/50 raffle, raffle, senior nights, and I'm planning to meet with the Booster Club, um, on October 4th. So try to listen to their perspectives and can certainly share any information with you all once I, um, attend that meeting. So I think those are the most pertinent things at this time.
All right, Byron, anything else?
I have, I have a few things. Don't forget about me.
Well, you weren't on the agenda then.
Neither was Steve.
He was only supposed to get.
Mine could be 30 seconds.
All right, do it.
Okay, so, um, first thing, I sent the draft, um, RFP, we sent the draft RFP, uh, for the kitchen, um, at the high school. It's a crisp back on September 8th. Um, he was out of the office all last week on vacation, um, so I'll follow up. If I don't hear from him this week, I'll follow up with him at the end of the week. Um, but we did send the draft to him, um, for him to review and maybe help us out with, if we need anything. Um, we did receive from the state some additional, um, school lunch revenue, a little over $19,000. Um, it was to, um, it was for some excess costs to run your school lunch program during COVID. So, uh, from March through June 2020, so a little over $19,000 we got from the state. And those, they fall into the same category as, um, the money we would use for our school lunch revolving. So, um, just wanted to share that we did get some additional revenue. Along those lines, there is a food supply shortage that, shortage that Ken had alerted us to. Um, he just wanted to make us aware, there may be some menu changes on the fly and that him and his staff will do their best to communicate those to us as they may come. But, um, you know, there, there may be some changes just due to, due to that. And lastly, the lightning strike at East Meadow, um, we are waiting on some, um, security cameras, some components for our security system. And components for the rooftop units. Um, this is the week that was the six to eight week projection for when we'd see parts. Um, we haven't received any yet, but John has been following up with the vendors and been in communication with them. So hopefully, um, we will see those soon and we can wrap up that.
Any questions?
I think it's a supply chain issue. Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. I think it's just a lot, a lot of factors.
Anything else? If not, I'll take that motion.
All those motions are there?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.